All right, it is Monday, July 14th. It's 6:30 PM. We'll let the Grantville City Council Work Session come to a halt. Mr. Gresham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The city of Grantville will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 28th at 6:30 PM or thereafter. Purpose of the hearing will be to receive public comment, recommendation, on a recommendation from the Planning Commission, which was to approve the zoning, to rezone the property at 65 Grady Smith Street to multifamily R6. It is presently a single-family residential R20. As I said, the Planning Commission recommended approval. That's when we hold our meeting in two weeks. Second item is discussion on Resolution 25-12 to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Coweta County regarding the floating local option sales tax collection and distribution. This is the new tax that was approved by the Georgia Legislature.
Okay, so with HB 581, there was a benefit for those cities that opted in, which we did. They capped the amount that homestead property could increase in value by whatever the inflation rate was last year. And good news, I got mine, and guess what? It didn't hardly go up. It was wonderful. But also, there was a subsequent clearing up of this, and I believe it was Senate Bill 92. I may have the number wrong on that.
91.
91, okay. But what this is now enabling is for the county, with the cities that opted in, and there was only one city that opted out, that was Palmetto, so they will be excluded, that we're going to be able to put on the ballot in November, the floating local option sales tax, which is a one cent per dollar sales tax, or a one percentage you want to call it, that will be collected in the county. The good news is, just like our SPOLOST have lost, roughly 60 to 70% of the money's collected on that tax come from people outside of the county. Every time someone's driving down 85, and they stop at Frasier's to get food, gas, and some cokes, they are, you know, from Atlanta, heading to the beach, they are paying that tax. So what that tax is going to enable, because it's going to be based on the same calculations that SPOLOST is basically used for with us, on our numbers, as we have sort of thumbed it, and I'm just going to give you a rough number, that if this passes on the November ballot, and the collection will start in January, that not for this budget cycle, because we're not doing this budget, but for the next budget cycle, next July and August, potentially, if the numbers work, and I think we'll be close to this, that, and I'm only going to speak for the city of Grant, I'm not going to speak for what Coweta does, school systems, or anything like this, but for the city of Grant, we will potentially be able to decrease property taxes across the board, not just homestead, by 70%. That's the first cut we have. So I'm just telling you what this will be able to do. What you're agreeing tonight is to basically sign on to an IGA with the county, and I'll sign it, saying basically that they will collect that tax for our benefit, and then pass us those funds. Okay? Questions?
Does the money go straight into the general fund?
It goes straight into the general fund. It can only be used for offsetting property taxes.
And this is all contingent upon it getting voted on in the November election?
Correct. That is correct. It will be on the ballot in November.
But as the mayor said, it will go to your general fund, so it won't require that you identify specific projects for it, like a SPOLOST.
Correct. It is designated to reduce property taxes. Okay?
Next item is the discussion on citywide fire hydrant pressure and flow inspection. Estimated cost $14,000.
Okay. You all had seen in Sonoy, where there was a fire. There's enough sufficiency. And they went to show up to put the fire out, and the hydrant didn't have enough flood. So they had to wait on tanker trucks to come in, and of course, the property was destroyed. I'm not sure if it could have saved anyway, but it's a terrible thing when fires show up and there's no fire flow. We saw that in California over the fires, that there was no water in hydrants. So it stuck my mind immediately, because I will tell you, for the Arnold Street development, we'd had some fire flow testing on Arnold Street, and it didn't pass. We're currently working on fixing that fire flow. And after I read the article in the New York Times Herald, I think that it would be irresponsible for any municipality, any government agency, anybody running a utility business, or anything else who is not going to take care of the citizens, to ensure that the hydrants have proper pressure and flow. So I got with Brennan, our city engineer, and we mapped it out. We got roughly 350 fire hydrants in the city. We're not going to test every single one. We don't have to do that. We think strategically, we can test around 100. We're going to hire a third-party company to do it, since we're not professional testers. And then we are going to, starting in potentially August or September, begin the process of testing fire hydrants around the city. This will include subdivisions, anywhere to make sure, to make darn sure, that if we have a situation, that we don't have a fire flow hydrant issue. It's just, it would be the worst thing in the world if we had a house catch on fire and come to find out, because we don't have tanker trucks here. We don't have them. So the 14,000 is a budgetary estimate. It might be a little less, but we'll see. And then what may result from this, folks, is a project to fix fire flow, and we'll discuss that after we get the test results. Okay? Questions? Okay?
The next two items, Mr. Mayor and council members, are placeholders for the meeting coming up. Discussion on Resolution Number 25-13, setting the 2025 annual mileage rate, and discussion on Resolution Number 2025-14, to adopt the fiscal year 2526 budget. The public hearing will be on August the 11th, 2025, which is the August work session. So it'll be before the August work session, and we all have copies of the budget bound for our review.
And we have placed two copies in the public library, as required. So like I always say, you've got two months to review the budget. I know you're probably just seeing it for the first time tonight. Please study, make notes. And I know we've got three more sessions before we vote on the budget, and we will be adopting the mileage rate on July 28th. Questions?
Will there be, Mr. Mayor, will there be a work session for the city council?
One work session.
On the budget?
Yeah, there's going to be a regular meeting on July 28th. There'll be the August 11th meeting for the city council work session, and then we'll vote on the budget August 25th. So we've got three more council sessions.
I mean, a session where we can have department heads present, that we can ask questions about the budgets?
We don't need department heads present.
Well, I was just asking, we're not going to do that.
No, we never done that. If there are questions on the budget, between Mr. Gresham and myself and Robbie, we're the ones who work on the budget.
So do the department heads have no input in it?
Oh, they've had the input, but they don't, they give input, but the budget technically belongs to me.
Not technically, by the charter.
By the charter. You are correct. So if there are questions, I know this budget inside of me. Okay?
So you, as one individual, you lead with the department heads to give input and putting together the budget?
No, Mr. Mills is the one who gets input from the department heads, as well as Mr. Gresham, who goes through the process of looking at every department, along with Higgins, and then myself over the top to look, and we've been going, we've been working on this budget for two months prior to the vote. Now, Mr. Mills has been working on it for six months, but we took it up two months ago.
So how do you get input from the staff, regarding whether they feel that they need more, or they feel that they, you know, they have some excess that can be shared about at the department? How do you get input from the staff on the budget?
So we have last year's budget, and they know the requirements of what they're going to need this year. The police are the excellent example. They reviewed what's given to them. They go down all the way through it. They find things like, well, we're going to need to get this this year, or this this year, and that is put into the budget, or we don't need this for this year, that is pulled out of the budget. So each department goes through an extensive, and then, basically, we end up sitting down with them too, going through it, going, okay, all right, if you miss anything, let's make sure you got it. I mean, it's a very extensive project process we go through.
Well, you have eliminated the meetings of the departments. The council, the city council, each council member is assigned a department. So how do you get input from the departments regarding the budget? If you've eliminated the committee meetings, how do you get input?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Barry, if I can call your attention to the first page of the budget. You will notice that we have the adopted budget in 2024, the adopted budget in 2025, the requested budget, pardon me, in 2026, and the forecasted budget in 2027. Now, as this was prepared, step back a year, and you would have the requested budget in 2025, the requested budget, or the forecasted budget in 2026. So we prepare a two-year budget. So all the department heads are looking at what is forecasted for the next year, as they're working through the year presently. So that's a real help for the department heads, because they know what is forecasted for the next year, as they're working in the present year.
And let's also clarify, when we talk about department heads, of the departments we have, Chief Whitlock, in conjunction with Cliff, work on their budget with us directly. If we're talking about the other departments, which are Public Works, Streets, Parks and Recreation, Administrative, the department head of all those departments is Mr. Gresham. He is the department head of all those. And of course, we've worked with Robbie as well, who is the city clerk. So when we say the department heads, those are it. Okay?
And the input from the city council?
This is your chance to give input.
Okay, I'm talking about the input before you print it up, put it in a binder.
Well, I got it. Okay, so I want to ask you a question. What would the city council know about?
It's a final budget marked draft, and you put it in front of us.
Yes.
Before you get to that point, what is the input, to get input from city council members? I don't understand the process.
He wants you to take this binder thing home, and take your pen, and mark on it as much as you want to, and then come back in two weeks and ask whatever questions you need. This is not final. He just made it look pretty for us to think.
Did you have input?
No. I got the same thing you got, sitting on the desk.
And you don't have any question about it?
Not tonight?
No. Okay?
There's no, it seems like there's no opportunity to make any changes. This thing's been printed up, and put in a binder, and a spiral binder, and this is this.
Something needs to be changed.
Nothing's going, same thing happened last year. We got it bound in a binder, marked gray, after the same thing that we were handed at that meeting was adopted at the next, at the time that we voted. So the process is a shutdown, and there's no transparency, there's no opportunity for making any suggestions or changes. You just accept what's put in front of you.
We have, like, three more meetings at least to talk about this. You're just, you're literally just making stuff up right now.
What do you mean, I'm making stuff up?
We have opportunities to talk about it.
I'm talking about what has happened in the past.
We have opportunities to change it. That's what, we had the same opportunities last year. We discussed it for two months. I don't know why.
Just because of the mail, they could have put a staple in it.
I mean, why does it matter what it looks like?
And let me clarify, you are welcome, that if you have questions outside of a council meeting, and you want to find out, Mayor, can you tell me about this, or Mr. Gresham, come sit, see us, email us, we could, you could do it individually as council people, that's fine. I freely did it as a candidate for Mayor. I sat down with him in the budget, and I was allowed to do that, and I had questions. So as individual council people, if you have questions, set a time up on anything that's in here, and we'll go over it. Okay? This is an iterative process. One note I want to make though, very important, the mayor's budget, he cut his budget by 41%, just so you know. Okay?
Well, this is the first time I've set eyes on this, so I'm sure I'm.
This is the first time, everybody, other than me and Mr. Gresham, and then the total package. Okay?
Next item for the mayor and council members is discussion on Resolution Number 2025-11, to adopt a policy on accepting donations to the city.
Okay, so what we're going to do with this one, and you've got the policy that's in there, and I know that this was put, this was put together by Mr. Bryan and Mr. Clark, with a few changes on my part. We're going to not codify it. We're going to, by resolution, add it to the city's financial policy, which I think makes the most sense. So it'll be an addendum to the financial policy, and we will pass this resolution. As far as the individual items on it, please review, ask questions. I mean, there, I think there are challenges with this, that we have to be very careful, very careful auditing, very careful procedures and policies, but I think we've drawn something up that will work.
Yeah, I mean, GMI said it was good for them, so.
And Mr. Mitchell has reviewed it, right, Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yeah.
And like we said, it's brought with potential, but as far as what we've got, you think we're okay, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, you know, that's what, you know, we've been doing for, you know, 100%, set policies to where, you know, one law goes wrong, kind of deal. That way, you know, it's already wrote out, it's already prepared, and if it does not meet these qualifications, it don't get accepted.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. As far as accepting donations, who can accept donations?
Only?
Any employee?
No, it has to come through the city clerk's office.
Any department can solicit.
But the actual donation has to come here to, has to come here to City Hall, to the front window, to be accepted by the city clerk's office.
So that it follows the same procedure, so everybody's doing the same thing?
Someone says, we're going to, I want to write you a $1,000 check for police, whatever. Great, wonderful. Please go down to City Hall, go see the city clerk's office, and we'll tell them what it's for you, and you're going to have to fill out stuff, and we'll take it, but it has to go through their office.
And is this donation considered a tax exemption? I mean, tax.
According to the IRS, it is.
They get, they get a receipt, and they can put that with their taxes, and show that they made a contribution to a nonprofit? Is it the same kind of concept?
We're not providing tax advice to anybody.
Correct.
No?
No.
But you didn't get a receipt?
It's up to you what you.
That's going to be you and your accountant.
And your accountant can do whatever they want to.
Correct.
To make a determination that we're not providing tax advice to anyone.
Okay?
Have we received any donations? Did we receive any donations last year?
No.
We didn't?
We might have received candy for eggs, I think, right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
So no, but no monetary donations. We haven't received monetary donations from last year at all, because we didn't allow it.
Yes, right here, we'll fix any rules and policies that we need to do, to set, you know, donation from here on out.
So someone thanks a contribution to that, this, say, a program like in the Recreation Department. If they make a contribution, what happens, how is that acknowledged?
It says it here, if it's under $2,000, the mayor or another city manager can accept it. If it's over $2,000, that's on city council, have to accept it.
If it's under $2,000, the city manager can, the city clerk, or?
The city manager and/or mayor. Will it, will allow it? Let's clarify, will allow it. The donation still goes to the city clerk, who takes the actual check. Let me just be clear on that. The mayor's not taking any actual checks, no.
Pretty much that, they review it.
Yes.
So this is money only, not goods and services, right?
It is goods and services, yeah.
If Coca-Cola wants to donate a park equipment to us, have at it.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I have to go into the clerk's office and get a copy of this policy, because I do not get a packet.
You get an email to you.
I do not get a packet of information for the meeting, so I guess I have to go into the city clerk's office to get a copy and pay for it, which is what I've been, I've had to do for, for several months now. I requested the document last week, and they told me it's going to be $54. So this is getting ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned. It's what's happening, what's happening with documentation, and records, and things that I need to do my job. I've got to pay for it.
Okay? Mr. Gresham.
Next item is discussion on second reading of ordinance Number 2025-08, to amend the zoning map of the city of Grantville to rezone tax parcel GO 3001037, known as 45 Grady Smith Street, from single-family residential to R20, pardon me, single-family residential R20 to multifamily residential R6. And again, the public hearing will be on the evening of Monday, July 28th, prior to this ordinance being on the agenda. That's what the public hearing is for.
Okay? Any other questions on this? Okay, Mr. Gresham.
Next item is discussion on first reading of ordinance Number 2025-09, regulating parking on city property.
Okay, so we have an issue with parking. I won't go into the details, but like a lot of things, we looked at the code of ordinances and found, we don't really have a parking ordinance that's adequate. So the police requested that we create a parking ordinance that they can use to regulate people parking, as example, we had one guy with a truck parking, covering up four spaces. So they have requested that we get this written, to be able to cover that, and certainly, within the ordinance, you can read the variations and what's in it. Okay?
The next item is discussion on amending ordinance Number 2023-18, which is the no ways ordinance to regulate nuisance and malicious noise.
So Mr. Mitchell is finishing, you said, there are two pieces actually to this. Let's talk about nuisance noise. There have been complaints by people in subdivisions particularly, about folks who literally maliciously create noise to aggravate their neighbors. And Chief, we haven't been able to really enforce that, because we didn't have regulations on it. One guy likes to rev his engine up at nine o'clock at night, then plays loud boom music, and there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, and yes, you could say, does that impact the noise ordinance? Well, no, because he's still within the time limits, but it's clear that this person, and he's not the only one, is maliciously trying to do things to their neighbors. So we're adding this. In addition, in reviewing the noise ordinance, and Mr. Mitchell's finishing it up, he had to double-check some things, and you'll have it in the next, in the packet shortly. The half, first half of the ordinance, the times were wrong, so that literally, it said you could make noise from midnight to seven in the morning, versus when we want to shut off. So I fixed all that, and the only other thing I did was that the time for shutting off noise, I think which is 10 o'clock at night, on Sunday, I extended that to eight o'clock in the morning, instead of seven o'clock in the morning, which was what the other ones were. And of course, we addressed within that, you know, the notion of commercial noise and things like that. So Mr. Mitchell's finishing that up, and you can read that. We have three more sessions with this one, so. Okay, any questions?
No, but Mr. Mayor, I have a question regarding a point of order. This agenda does not have an opportunity to make threats in council members, to make any announcements, and I have an announcement that I would like to make. When would I be able to do that? It's regarding the passing of a former council member, Councilman Johnny Cooks passed away.
Okay, I believe that's been all over Facebook. I personally have been involved with it. I mean, you can, you can announce it if you want.
Yes, his funeral service is going to be Monday, July 21st, at 12:00 PM.
Okay.
And the public viewing will be 10 to 12. It's at Sewell Mortuary, 220. And the public viewing will be ten to twelve. It's at Sewell Mortuary, Two Twenty, Charlie Patterson Road in Grantville.
Okay, and I believe that's been posted by multiple people all over, all the Facebook pages, so I think.
And do we?
We got that covered, so.
Do we have any, anything in the city, in our policies or procedures to acknowledge, or?
The mayor's taking care of that.
And?
I got it.
What is that going to be?
I've got it. It'll be, it is repassed.
You'll do what?
I'm taking care of that.
Would you like to share that with us?
I'd like to hold it until it's repassed.
Until it's repassed?
If you don't want it.
Okay, so.
All right, Mr. Gresher.
The last item for your discussion is an item that we have annually. It's approval and execution of the Twenty-Six, Twenty-Twenty-Six Contract for Services with Three Rivers Area Agency on Aging. This is the subcontracting agreement that's in the packet to help our senior center to live for their elderly and disabled persons in the Three Rivers Regional Commission region, to live independently in their communities as long as possible. This helps fund our senior center and our meals.
And I'm going to add just briefly, it is a, you know, a significant budget item. I don't know a lot of other cities our size that do this. Not only do we provide services and camaraderie for the seniors here during the day, but we feed hundreds of people a month on Meals on Wheels through the senior center. So I just commend them every time. It's such a, it's such a great thing that the city does. So, any other questions on that?
Is there going to be an increase in our funding this year?
In what?
The, for the senior center. Is there an increase?
I believe the budget has gone up, yes. But we're also getting more money from Three Rivers as well, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Will our, will our share be higher? I know we pay part, and then Three Rivers pays part.
No, the majority of it is funded through Three Rivers. Yes.
Yeah.
We don't have any matching funds? The city doesn't put anything in, for seniors?
The city puts money in, but the majority of the funding comes from Three Rivers, which basically comes through the state as federal money.
Right. Okay. With that, the business of the evening is concluded. We are adjourned.
Mr. Greshaber, on the budget, I forgot to ask you when I was talking, do they, is the new budget, is it raising for employees?
Yes.
Is this not an across-the-board?
Pardon me?
Is it not an across-the-board?
No.
Did you say it somewhere where it says six?
Five percent.